Hello, everybody. I'm Mike O'Reilly, the chairman of Town and Borough Planning and Zoning Commission. It is August the first. This is our August 1st regular meeting. It is 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. To the motto for which it stands, one nation under our, in this world.
Well, we have direct seat, uh, yeah, her seat.
All the domics are up, so.
Alright, so let's call the roll starting on my right.
I'm Alex Margulino, Commissioner.
Tony Panetia, alternate.
Ryan Condon, Commissioner.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate Commissioner.
Catherine Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
And online, we have James DeMayo.
Yep, James DeMayo, Town Engineer.
Okay, thank you. We'll do general public participation at this time if anyone is here in public. I would like to comment on any applications, not before the Commissioner or on any planning and zoning matter. This is the time to do so. Please raise your hand online. Raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. First public hearing, R A A 2024-01 is a text amendment, excavation and fill. This is being continued from 7/18/24 and it's being brought to us by Solely Engineering. And what's Solely Engineering?
Hi, for the record. My name is Mary Blackburn, registered landscape architect in Connecticut with Solely Engineering here at 51 Main Streets. Is this?
For some reason. Well, this has to get fixed because you're not the only one that's gonna need it. No, I share content and then there's usually a button that says I'm able to share screen. And for some reason tonight, that button is not here. Let's see. HDMI, click Share Screen. Share Key. Share Zoom. I don't want to end the meeting because that's gonna be problematic.
In, this was harsh. Is it in the water? Nope.
You don't have any pictures.
Yeah, I know. I know, but you're not the only person this evening that is pro, that is going to need it.
So. Well, well, if you're good to discuss, we'll discuss and then we'll take a five minute. Do a five minute recess after your presentation so that I don't waste your time. So I'm gonna give like a high level review of what we've been working on. We've been coordinating with town staff and we're still in that process. But we've identified some major objectives in our coordination of what needs to be revised or posing for revision. So we're going to remove the waiver provision, as you're all aware. And then we're also going to clarify which applications are exempt from excavation and fill permits. So that would be single family houses, anything with a site development plan and anything going for a special exception permit because that review is all covered under those application procedures. We'll clarify that excavation and fill permits are pretty much strictly for grading activities to prep a site for future development. In doing all this, we've reviewed language from the surrounding communities, including Newtown, Oxford, Trumbull and Shelton. We're kind of identifying that, you know, how those communities have done it, whether it's guidelines versus specific strict conditions. And again, tonight, I'm not, we're not looking to discuss like the specific particular language that we're proposing. Because we're still, we're meeting that with town staff. But if you, as the Commission, have any additional concerns or, you know, anything you want to bring up with the existing regulations that you'd like to see addressed, that's kind of what we're here to get feedback on.
So we're basically gonna pull out the all the residential stuff. So that doesn't come here and you know, the staff can deal with that. Can be a little more lax. We're basically, and we're gonna pull out anything that's gonna have a building or a structure. It's part of the application, whether it be an SCP or Site Development Plan or whatever. So this is just going to basically aim towards people that want to develop the land or they want to create the land to make it presentable for sale or for whatever.
Which potentially could be left forever.
That's why it's important that slopes be correct and not be dangerous. Place.
So what has happened is they have met with staff and including Chairman O'Reilly, Town Engineer DeMayo, myself and some other members. And we've had a preliminary conversation. They came back with some language. We are now staff looking at that language a little bit even more. But I think the goal and the objective, as they both have outlined tonight, is we would like to meet one more ti, at least one more time, staff, as well as with the applicant to hammer out a couple additional things. But this Commission has experience approving excavation and fill permits. And so really the fundamental question, I think, from staff to this Commission and the applicant to the Commission, is there anything else that you guys have come across during those approvals that you would like us to pay special attention to? And two, do you fundamentally agree with the way that it's been presented? Which is, right now, it's not very clear that this is only for the properties that, you know, Chairman O'Reilly outlined, which is just properties to be potentially developed that have the potential to be left for a long period of time and then developed in the future. It's not very clear that like this isn't for residential properties. There's some very confusing language about if you need to have it when you also have an SCP. And I think we've actually run into that over the last couple of months where people have asked that question. So the way that we're changing the language is if you have a special exception permit or a site development permit approved by this Commission, you do not need a separate excavation and fill permit. If you are doing work on a residential property that's being approved administratively by staff through a zoning compliance certificate, like the development of a single family home, you do not need to come to this Commission for a separate excavation and fill permit. The only reason we're coming to this Commission is for excavation fill associated with that being the only objective. So one, just making sure that that is the intent of the way the regulations were adopted, that's still the intent of this Commission. Is the first question and the second question, is there anything else? If the answer is yes, is there anything else you guys have come across that you want us to pay particular attention to?
Just a little clean, so any, any such items that you just described, staff will be able to handle.
Any what that we just described?
Situation that you just described.
Residential only.
Residential only.
So right now, staff approves, like if a single family residence comes in, with the exception of an accessory dwelling unit in an RF3 zone, which does come to this Commission. If someone comes in for a single family home in an RF1 zone, staff approves that administratively. It goes to planning and zoning, it goes to the town engineer, it goes to health, it goes to building, it goes to everybody. And we issue a zoning compliance certificate and a building permit, you know, out to them. There's lots of grading that occurs during that. More than 500 cubic yards of fill often, there's walls associated with it. They are changing contours more than two feet, all these things that technically, if you read the regs, could fit into that. We do all of that administratively. We'd like to continue to do that administratively. We don't send a single family resident if they're changing a contour for more than two feet in elevation to this Commission. I don't think that was the intent of the regs when it was written. That's not how we're executing them. So we're just trying to make that language more clear in the regulations. If there's a special exception permit or a site development plan, you're gonna see it anyway. And you're gonna see how all that grading happens and you're gonna make the determination if they can grade 25 feet from the property line. Or if there's reasons that you allow it because of a condition of a wetland and you're trying to, you know, they have to meet that condition and you guys want to preserve, you know, forested areas, so you're allowing them to, you know, allow the driveway to be a little closer to a property line. Or there's joint agreement, they own two properties and they're willing to grade a little, you know, things that right now are restricted potentially in the excavation and fill permit. This Commission has the chance to have that input because you're already seeing it as part of the special exception permit. So.
I have no problem with that. Just trying to understand it. So someone has, let's say, two or three lots and he wants to enhance if he has a may, maybe just grade it. He could handle it through staff.
No, if they are.
There's a resident, residents on it?
I'm sorry?
Is, is, there's a home on it, on it or?
There's no home. Just let's say if somebody has a piece of land that's got some contours that he wants to.
And it's a resi, it's in a residential zone or it's in a commercial zone?
Residential zone.
That staff can do administratively.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Would this be, you kind of just mentioned it there, but I feel like when we've done these, we've run into issues in the past where they had to seek a waiver, which I know won't be a thing because the change in contour near a property line when they own both properties and the line just happened to be in the middle of the site. Is there something we can do to kind of?
James, do you want to talk about the way you're thinking about approaching that?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different ways. The first thought is adding language in terms of a project line. You know what I mean? So if it's, if two properties are owned by the same owner and it's all part of the same project or and/or development, then, you know, we can just add simple language like that. We're still kind of kicking around the language, but yeah, that would be the intention is if somebody's developing both to not have like a crazy weird thing happen in the middle of the property, you know, we'd like them to be able to make it uniform and not be held to that restriction.
Perfect. Yeah, as long as that's what you guys are looking into.
Yep.
That sounds good. Thanks.
Questions? Alright, we're good.
So we are going to continue the public hearing to September 5th. We just have to have that on the record. And I have to double, I believe that requires an ex. That. It's September 6th. But let's, yeah, so let's touch base and see if we need to have an extension letter or not. But yes, we have to close the public hearing by September 6th. Thank you.
Next.
Gonna let the public talk.
It's talking to me a public.
Thank you. If there's anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hands. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next public hearing.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Maybe not.
We also do have one exhibit since the, I can't remember if we read James DeMayo's comments in the last time. So Exhibit 7 is Town Engineer James DeMayo's comments, document date 7/18/24. And then we did get the revised text from Solely Engineering, document dated 7/30/2024. Sorry, just for the record, maybe for the exhibitor.
And moving on. Text man, R A A 2024-02. This is to change to allow multi-family housing units within the MDD district on a one acre lot or more in size, down from 15 acres.
And the project attorney is here via suit.
This is a continuation from 7/18/24. We discussed this several times in the subcommittee and now we have a text before us. And I believe we have Attorney Russo.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzi LLC, offices at 10 Saskatoon Hill Road in Fairfield, here on behalf of the applicant. Chair, we're gonna request the continuance of the public hearing. Based on the feedback, we got it the last hearing. We've been making some revisions to the amendment. And we were hoping to have it ready for today, but we're still working on it. And in, in want to also discuss the revisions with staff. So we would just request a continuance for tonight.
Alright, if that's no problem, then we will do that.
And same thing, we will need an extension for that. I'm actually, I think our notes in our, the 35 days from July 18th is the August 22nd. So we will need an extension to get to September 5th. So this will be continued to September 5th.
Do you have any?
And the applicant would agree to extend the timeframe to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have any additional exhibits?
No.
Alright. Is there anyone from the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. Anyone from the public online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will then move on to the next application.
Thank you.
Next public hearing. This is SCP 2024-04, 588 Pepper Street.
Actually, can we take a five minute recess for me to try to figure out this computer situation? So sorry.
It's 7:15. We'll reconvene at 7:20.
Catherine, also check your sources as well, like on the, like TV projector thing, starting out there.
Yeah, so the HDMI cable wasn't plugged in. And so I just plugged it in, but I don't know if like, it's now not registering. So I don't know if me plugging it in halfway through now makes it like not work.
Do you want to reboot the whole?
I don't know how that works for the recording though.
Reboot that. Yeah, I would say try that.
That's a good idea.
First.
You know the password?
Yes. You know, I'll spend my entire day tomorrow hunting down.
Yeah, restart.
That's doing something.
Okay, 7:20. Town and Borough Planning and Zone Commission Regular Meeting for August 1st, 2024 is reconvening at 7:20. We have SCP 2024-04, 588 Pepper Street. This is a new application, I have a notice.
In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, August 1st at 7:00 PM. Or soon thereafter, it'll be a hybrid Zoom meeting with in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. SCP 2024-04, 588 Pepper Street, special exception permit application for proposed construction of a 16,000 square foot warehouse at the northwest corner of the property with 36 parking spaces and 12,415 plus or minus square foot outdoor storage located at 588 Pepper Street. Accessor map, 103 Lot 22, 588 Pepper Street, LLC owner, Solely Engineering LLC representative. Notice was published in voices twice on July 17th and July 24th.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. And Kathleen, you have the exhibits.
Yes, so Exhibit number one is the application from Solely Engineering dated June 12th, 2024. Exhibit two, so that's application and the drawings. Exhibit two is comments from EMS from June 27th, 2024. Exhibit three is planning and zoning report dated July 6th, 2024. Exhibit four is comments from the Town of Monroe Health Department, July 10th, 2024. Exhibit five is ARB recommendation dated July 10th, 2024. Exhibit six is the planning and zoning revised report, revised 7/16/2024. And Exhibit seven is is the engineering comments by James DeMayo, July 19th, 2024. And that is the end of the exhibits.
Thank you. And for the applicant, who has?
Hi, Jason Montagno of Solely Engineering. I'm on here in behalf of the applicant in pursuit of a special exception permit for 588 Pepper Street. So just a overview of where we are located. This is 588 Pepper Street, which is off of Main Street. So I will zoom in more so we can get an idea. So this is a zoomed out thing of the site. See, we have concrete tubes itself. We have an existing building that is currently a warehouse located there. And in the existing conditions, there are some empty dumpster pads along with some vehicles associated with the applicant's business. So they have some initial storage out there now on asphalt, millions. So here's just a rendering of what this site would conception look like. Would be the warehouse would be located in the back along the hillside. And then we would have an outdoor storage area proposed on a concrete pad with additional plantings along the eastern property line adjacent to the existing business of east. And then we provide additional parking spaces, some striping and utilizing the two existing full movement access drives. So here's our site plan. So as I mentioned, we have the proposed warehouse in the back. We have the proposed outdoor storage area that is located near a concrete pad. We'll be proposing fencing along the outdoor storage area on the eastern side in between the in between the current site and the eastern development. We're proposing striping, ADA compliance spaces, curb stops and utilizing, like I said, full movement existing dry walls along Pepper Street. So for stormwater, we would be basically taking all the, or most of the stormwater in the existing conditions that sheet flows to the east and collecting it, the catch basins. The stormwater would then be treated through hydrodynamic separator or water quality units before entering the underground infiltration system. From there, as the infiltration system fills up, it would be then outletted to a detention pond to the eastern and northern part of the site before being carried by a pipe. And then that stormwater, as you can see on the southwest part of the property, there's an existing pipe that runs underneath Pepper Street. So we would essentially be carrying the stormwater to that pipe. We've designed the site to be soil erosion compliant with the latest manual. We have our stockpile areas, silt fencing, sediment traps. We have a construction insurance to alleviate any soil that we eventually track out of Pepper Street. We have our inlet protections along all the proposed and existing catch basins on the property. For our utility plan, so basically the existing warehouse is already serviced by water, by gas and by electric and telecom. So we'll coordinate with utility companies to make the correct connection points with them. However, since there's no sanitary roadway, we have to propose a septic system in the rear, which is then already set to the Health Department for review. In terms of landscaping, one of the big things is we wanted to make sure that we had a buffer between the existing properties of east. So we're proposing overstore trees, some additional arborivines to provide more screening. In terms of to alleviate any erosion, we have erosion mixes along the disturbed areas in a wetland, a wet plant seed that we put into the basin. So we'll be planting as well adjacent to the dumpster that is to the north of northeast of the proposed building to provide additional screening. That was also a recommendation from the ARB to provide more arborivines along the eastern property line. So we're really happy to add those to make sure that we have enough of a buffer there. In terms of lighting, we made sure that the site would be dark spectrum compliant. We are going to propose upgrading the existing warehouse to make sure that there is more illumination throughout the site and provide light levels that are safe for anyone that is using the rear of the building and the current building as well. We are also limiting light spillage to the adjacent, the G sets using properties. And again, just kind of a rendering, I like to just throw in there, just bring it all, tie it all back into place of what we are proposing. So this is a rough overview of what the building would look like. We have eight overhead doors. There will be additional swing doors that would open up to gain access to the proposed building. These are just the basic architectural plans. So all this will have characteristics that resemble the existing buildings, such to make sure that everything is uniform looking. We're gonna have the same, if not similar, siding roofing material. The colors will be as well matching the existing building. We have like a bone white material on the outside. We have a seamless roof that will be put on and And I will show you the next couple of slides of what the existing building looks like so you can get a better accurate representation. Just some more cross sectional views of what it would look like from the side. Again, just showing kind of the truss system, how it would be built. It will be compliant with the maximum building height associated with the industrial district two, which is forty feet. This building will be approximately thirty eight feet tall. And then this is just a plan view to just kind of show the framing of how everything would work out. I'm also showing overhead door locations and the swing door locations. These were some of the samples that were that are part of this prefabricated building that we're allowed to choose from for the colors. So yeah, we tried to match our pay colors that would match the existing. So we have a bone white for the siding, cocoa brown for trimming gutters, and they should be very, very close, if not the exact same resemblance. And that's what the current building does look like. These are just more materials that were submitted to the architectural reboard to present. So standing seam would be one of them with roof. And then lastly, we just made sure that we were allowed to accommodate the proposed trucks that were entered the facility. We wanted to make sure that accommodated the largest field possible. We did run a WB sixty seven, and we also ran the fire truck. And of course, with James Mayo's recommendation of what to use. So we really ran that, and we will be submitting that as part of our response to comments package that is going to come to come. And that is all I have for the presentation, or than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Start with commissioner questions on my right.
What is going to be the main use of the the new warehouse? What's going to be stored in there?
It'll actually be accommodate what the existing building is. So it's all HVAC, plumbing, electrical supplies, and that potentially would be subleased in the future. We haven't ironed out the exact square footage, but the main component right now would be vehicles, any dumpster pads that they had to put in the building for any reason, maybe maintenance on them, and an additional storage for supplies for the applicant.
So the the company in the front building, do they own the entire property?
That's correct.
Okay. And so you said that they are thinking of subleasing part of the warehouse?
It's possible that they might do some portion of the building. They're not exactly sure the exact delineation for.
No questions for now.
So you mentioned that you, excuse me, accommodate large trucks?
We did.
Tire trucks?
Yes, we just wanted to make sure that it would accommodate any future uses so that we have the necessary swinging and radius to accommodate a WB sixty seven as well as the fire truck from the ground.
That's the radius coming in. Are you able to turn them around?
Yes, we were actually able to certainly have the entire site by entering, going around and looping around the back of the existing building, and then coming back out and turning out onto Pepper Street.
And you need a septic system, right?
That's correct.
You have an office, you can have an office in there, office space?
Oh, for the proposed warehouse? Yeah, we are actually, we designed it based on the maximum number of employees at the moment, since everything will be kind of stored in there. So we did twenty five as the maximum number of employees. So that's how we sized our system for it.
So you're going to have an office space for twenty five employees plus taking care of them for sanitary lives?
Well, mainly, we don't have an office space for it yet. It's mainly just for the storage, but there will be people working in there. So we wanted to make sure that we have enough design for that to accommodate the people.
We haven't designed it yet.
There is, there's not an exact delineation of office space, so we just based on the number of employees at the moment.
Thank you.
Well.
Is there a restroom?
Yeah, we're going to be proposing restrooms in there. That detail will be ironed out, sent to the building department for locations and feedback on that.
And then for the EMS letter, is it all one floor?
Yes, that's correct, all one floor.
And then for the outdoor storage, what would be being stored in the outdoor storage?
Empty dumpster containers and vehicles that are already currently stored in the rear of the site now will just be, you know, more properly organized and screened and have enough room to organize everything.
And are they just going to be on regular pavement? What's the base of that?
That'll be a concrete pad area, yeah, just to provide, you know, additional strength and structural stability for it.
No other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
So is this building replacing the sorting facility that we saw an application for a while back?
Yes, yeah, so now it's just the warehouse at this point, yeah.
So there's no plan of doing a sorting facility or those types of uses in this building?
That's correct. So it's just literally going to be warehousing at this point for the applicant.
What is the the hours of the lighting? Any idea on that?
The how long it'll turn on and off? I don't have that ironed down at the moment, but if there's any recommendation for the applicant.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's it's better if they're not on after nine, you know, on a timer.
Absolutely.
However, I would just say, please let us know what it's going to be, because I would like to run that past police to get their way, because sometimes they are concerned about safety, especially in the rear of a project site of just people loitering and congregating.
And will the site be secure?
In the rear, we're not proposing any additional fencing to cut off public access right down the street.
Okay, that's all I have.
I actually don't have any other questions that weren't already asked.
Thanks.
Have a variance from CBA?
That's correct.
Where's the fifteen, where's the variance? That looks like they have plenty of room.
Yeah, it was the western corner of the building. That would be it. So it got reduced from twenty five feet to fifteen feet in twenty twenty four. Yeah, so we're ready, we're ready.
It's all going to be concrete or the tremendous concrete note?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, having duty outside of the outdoor storage area, and then the storage area would be concrete.
Any questions from?
I have another question.
Oh, go ahead, Tom, right?
No, no, you, Commissioner first.
Is this sprinkle?
I'm sorry?
Sprinkle?
Oh, sprinkle, sprinklers?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that'll be, I believe it's a, if it is subdivided, then there might be a sprinkler, sprinkler requirement, which will be incorporated. So once we submit the finalized plans of the interior to the building department, then we will go down that route.
Hours of operation?
Hours of operation, they'll be the same hours as the current building, so roughly probably seventy in the morning. People are getting in there, and then people are closed on shop towards the similar work hours. Well.
One more question. Is there a general restriction on what can be stored in these warehouses as far as we have as a town, or is that something we would have to put in?
One of my comments has been, as part of the industrial zone, they are required to do a narrative that outlines how they are going to meet the performance standards for noise, vibration, air pollution, glare and heat, hazardous waste and materials, as well as explosion, fire, and radiation hazards. We've requested for that to be part of their additional submission. And then as part of that, yeah, I would just try to outline, you know, what you can of that, because you're not renting it. You know, we've talked about restrictions with self-storage facilities and things like that. The hope is, is that what they outline in that they're basically proving to you that they're not going to have any hazardous waste materials that will be part of the record, and they can be held to that in the future. Would you like more than that?
Well, I'm just worried about like construction debris being brought there and stored, asphalt, shingles, roofing, you know, old demolished stuff that was originally intended to go in there. I just don't want it to be, you know, say one thing and then done another.
Yeah, I think I can also check in with the fire marshal. You know, he has specific standards in the fire code of what they can and cannot do, and what they can and cannot have. And I know that they do periodic inspections of some of these facilities in order to make sure they're in compliance. I can get a little more details of what's required as part of the fire code.
Right.
Chairman, are you referring to inside the building or outside the building?
Both, really.
Outside the building, you can put limitations on it as well. Inside would probably fall more under the fire marshal and building official, as Kathleen stated.
Right, especially since they're thinking of subleasing. You know, it's a whole nother company you got to deal with.
All right, Kathleen.
All right. Going through the exhibits, I think Commissioner Brian had followed up with this about EMS, just wanted to make sure they had access to everything. So if it's one floor, they will have access to everything, so that agrees with that comment. We did have a memo from the health department. The existing building requires a septic system for review of section nineteen thirteen B one hundred A. So they just have to comply with the health department's requirement for a B one hundred A, and you guys will go back and forth on that items. Just for the record, the ARB did review the site development plans for the proposal of the warehouse facility at their meeting on July tenth, two thousand and twenty four. They found that the site development plans to be consistent with good architectural character for the town of Monroe and compatible with its site and adjoining buildings with the following conditions. The applicant shall review changing the chain link fence to vinyl with the final color to be coordinated with the proposed building. Originally, it was a chain link fence with privacy screening in that.
That's correct.
Are you are changing, are you proposing to change that to vinyl?
Yeah, we will change that to vinyl.
And then the applicant shall reviews, there's potential to add understory plants along the deciduous tree line at the entrance to provide additional screening. I heard you touch on that a little bit, but I think the concern was there's a deciduous tree line going through, but there is a limited amount of space. So the way that it was worded is that you guys needed to see if that was even possible with root balls and trebery and things of that nature. Did you have a chance to look into that?
Yeah, we think we could have. There's definitely, we're going to look into that more, but we're more than happy to provide additional.
Beautiful. I had an in-person meeting with the fire marshal. He had no additional comments for the application, but I will follow up with him about their inspections inside of the building and what's required. We spoke about EMS. I also had an in-person meeting with the police chief who had no additional comments. But if we do put hours of limitation on the lighting, that's something I would like to run by him. And then we have memos from the town engineer who is on tonight, so he can speak to his items, and we'll get to that in a moment. My comments mostly had to do with providing just some additional information, including the narrative that's required as part of our regs for the industrial zone and related to the outdoor storage. This commission several years ago updated the outdoor storage requirements in our regulations. However, it's found in the B one district, but it does outline about, and of course, I don't have it, it's forty percent of the lot area. However, there is also conflicting information under the actual like I two part of the zone. We're talking about twenty percent of the gross floor area. I believe this commission adopted those regulations to supersede those, but they're still written in the regs. So as the planning and zoning administrator, I have to point out to you the most restrictive of those, because that's normally where we land. However, I take no objection if this commission says, no, no, our intention at that time was to do that. If that's the case, I'm actually just going to add it to this next round of text changes so that it's done and memorialized. But if the right now, they're in compliance with the forty percent of the gross lot area, they're not in compliance with twenty percent of the gross floor area of the principal building, and I just wanted to make that available to the commission. Are you guys proposing any signage?
We will review to make sure that we don't need necessarily anything, just but if there are some signs that we have to incorporate to make our increase the safety or vehicular safety or pedestrian safety, then we're happy to step.
Just as owning compliance certificate is required for any signage that goes up, we just wanted the EO to be able to do that. And if you are potentially going to blast for any reason as part of this project, we need that disclosed as part of this application, and a blasting plan should be provided. Town engineer Dimeo, do you want to add anything from your comment memo?
There's nothing major that's still outstanding. The applicant's engineer and myself discussed my outstanding comments. I believe they're addressing, addressing pretty much all of them. So I don't think that there's anything that I'm expecting to to come back that's that's not addressing it. I'll be honest, my major concern is actually the pipe going underneath Pepper Street and making sure that that pipe can handle all the water that's going there. That's pretty much my biggest concern with this application, but I believe the applicant is addressing that and providing me proof that it's not an issue, so.
So we
Send that to you, Jason.
So we do still have some outstanding comments, and we just recommend that this gets continued to September fifth, so that the applicant has a chance to do a resubmission.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go to the public. Are there any members of the public here tonight or online that would like to comment on this on this application? Please raise your hands.
And I'm going to stop sharing for just a second so that we can see online a little better.
Anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Anyone in person would like to comment on this application? Okay, seeing none, then we will continue this hearing until September the sixth.
Sixth.
Our next meeting. Thank you very much.
You all appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is a site development plan. That is so.
Subdivision plan.
Subdivision, SUB two thousand and twenty four dash oh four, file number one, two, seven, seven, three fifty nine Spring Hill Road. You have exhibits for us?
Since our last meeting, we have revised plans and a stormwater report document date July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four. And that's the end of the exhibits.
All right, and for the applicant?
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Zombie is here.
Yes.
All right, so my name is Chris Palacki. I'm a licensed civil engineer with Civil One, offices located in Woodbury, Connecticut. Here to talk about three fifty nine Spring Hill Road. If you may recall, we were before you about two weeks ago to discuss the project. Since then, we have received comments from town staff, including the town engineer, the health department, and the zoning administrator. We did respond to those comments last week. Kathleen, if you wouldn't mind, if you can make me the presenter and like to just quickly run through those. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
So I think I've dealt with this before where I don't, because this is like a keypad, I don't have that option. I think I have to make you the host and then trust that you'll make me the host back.
Okay, that's fine.
So let's see. So I do believe that you should now be able to share.
Sorry, just a second here. Let's see. All right, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hopefully. Perfect, okay. All right, so again, three fifty nine Spring Hill Road. The site is located off Monroe Turnpike. You come down Spring Hill Road. I believe you guys just approved the Starbucks recently on this site right here. This is an older aerial, but this is where Jersey Mike's Chipotle and Jake's Wayback is. And this is the site of our proposed subdivision. So again, you're seeing the four lots before you there. So this is our overall site layout plan. I won't get into the details too much because I just talked about it last time. But the comments we received from town staff and the town engineer were quite, were pretty simple. One of them was there's a stone wall along the front of the property, pretty much stretches from east to west here. And the town engineer asked that we maintain it to the maximum extent practicable, and we are going to do that. So that was our, one of the comments that we received. There was some other comments. The, there's an existing old house located approximately in this vicinity. Hold on, I'll turn on my pointer. Approximately right here, if you can see on the screen. So the kennels from the old SPCA were behind this house. Approximately right here, if you can see on the screen. Uh, so the, the kennels from the old S P C A were behind this house, and there's, there was power to them. So there's a couple of utility poles that are located in this general vicinity, and the town engineer asked that, uh, what are we doing with them? And, uh, they're going to be removed along with the kennels, the fences. There's some odd like outbuildings, if you will. Uh, all that's gonna be removed as part of the, uh, proposed subdivision development. So. There were some other comments about grading, so adding a couple of spots, um, and topography along this access drive and in a couple of other areas across the site, which we did, uh, agree to and provide. Um, there was also a request to provide a bond estimate, which we did provide to the town engineer. Um, and then there was just a few other stormwater related items. I won't get into the nitty gritty with, but we did address, uh, all those comments. The health department had a few minor comments, uh, regarding some notes on our plans and some additional testing that had to be done when we come forth for the individual plot plans for each property, which we agreed to, but overall across the site, there is plenty of suitable soils. Um, so for the subdivision purposes, we are, uh, all set in that aspect. And then there was a couple of comments from, uh, Kathleen, um, that we addressed as well, uh, regarding some clarity with the zoning table. Um, and also providing a real estate appraisal for the property. So instead of open space for this land, we are proposing a fee in lieu. So as part of your regulations, if you, if the applicant is proposing a fee in lieu for a subdivision for the open space, uh, they have to get an appraisal done. So I, I apologize, our appraiser was working overtime and got it done today. But we did submit that, uh, this afternoon for the record, and the appraisal came back at four hundred thousand dollars for the value of the raw land. So that means that, uh, our applicant, uh, is, uh, proposing to pay a fee of forty thousand dollars, uh, to the Town of Monroe Open Space Fund. Um, and if you were at the last meeting, the, there really isn't a good spot to provide, uh, dedicated open space on the property. There's a residential property, uh, located in this portion of the map or your screen. There's another residential property here, here, and on this side, and then you have Spring Hill Road in the front. So, uh, there's not really a good spot where we can connect to any existing open space. And since the, uh, property is, is small, it's only four point four acres in size. Uh, you'd only be getting point four four acres of land. Um, so there, again, there's not really, uh, a good reason to provide a dedicated portion of land for this, which is why we opted for the fee in lieu. Uh, with that, I really don't have any other comments. Like I said, we addressed all the, uh, comments, uh, put forth by town staff, and we thank you for your comments. And at this time, I'd like to open it up to see if the commission has any questions.
All right, we'll start with the commissioners on my right.
Just wondering about that stone wall you're talking about. Is it gonna just be left natural? Are you guys gonna dress it up a little bit or?
So it's currently a stacked, uh, fieldstone, like old farmer's wall, if you will. And we're gonna keep it natural as it is, except we're gonna remove the stones from the driveway entrances. So you'll, there'll be like four breaks in the wall, if you will, just for each one of the driveways. But otherwise, the wall on the front is, is, it's quite nice looking, honestly, and aesthetically pleasing. So I believe our applicant, uh, wishes to keep it at this time. So, to the maximum extent practicable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They require to relocate the stones. They remove somewhere else on the property. Am I making that up? To, to the extent feasible, yes.
Yeah.
No other questions?
I don't have any questions.
No. Okay, um, I don't either. Um, so we'll. Anything from you, yeah, Kathleen?
Uh, so we did receive both the appraiser. Uh, we received a suggestion of the appraiser a week ago with a response to comment letters, but we did not get his resume until today and an appraiser report. So per the regulations, this commission has to jointly approve and agree to the appraiser. It kinda went a little bit forward, but I've had a chance to look at the appraiser. He has an active license. He did it in compliance with what's required for our regulations. And it's a pretty extensive report. However, this commission has not seen it. Um, so I leave it at your discretion of, there's fundamentally two things I believe we need to vote um, to make sure that you guys agree on the appraiser that they are suggesting. I think you can do that without actually reading the court, you know, if it's up to you. Um, and then, but I don't believe we're prepared tonight to approve it. Fundamentally, I've had a chance to talk to the health department. Uh, you know, James had a chance to look at it. I've had a chance to look at it. We don't see any major outstanding issues, but I would like to, um, draft the resolution, make sure James has a chance to agree that the bond is correct, you know, all of those things, just to tidy some things up for the next meeting.
All right, so, um, Chris, are you okay with closing the hearing then?
I mean, it's a, it's a regular hearing, but.
Yeah, it's just a regular meeting. Uh, we were hoping to get approved tonight, but I understand, uh, town staff wants to wrap things up and give us the approval of the September meeting. We're fine with that as well.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll close hearing.
Thank you.
And, um, we can actually go into deliberations on this application and then. So it's one, two, if all of us men can deliberate on this, how, how are you all leaning towards, uh, draft an approval?
Yeah.
Any, um, expeditions?
Besides the condition of.
Besides the ones Kathleen did.
Yeah.
Delinated.
Yeah, I, I would be.
Okay. We'll draft an approval. All right. So then we'll do that, Kathleen.
Oh, we got a question?
What's the appraisal for, for the entire piece of?
Four hundred thousand, just for the vacant land.
So it's seven percent of the fair market value of the land. So that actually includes the building and, you know, other things, which is why for four acres, it's actually four hundred thousand dollars, because, you know, they, they take the assessed value of all the existing.
Do you do any appraisal as the land as it appears now or after the subdivision?
As it appears now.
All right. Then you, you'll draft a approval for our September fifth meeting.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Now, hold on one moment before Chris.
Thank you all. I believe I made you the host, Kathleen, so you should be all set.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so we preliminary agree to the appraiser, and we'll just do two votes at the next meeting, just for the record, so that everything is in good shape. All right, beautiful.
Thanks. We have a new application, which, uh, some of you may have seen before.
Um, and you guys have it, right? She left for you? Yes. So that's, um, thirteen eighty.
And thirteen fourteen Monroe Turnpike and forty three Birdseye Road.
So it's a proposal to change an existing parcel of land, uh, from RF two to RR, which is the recreational residence. The point of the recreational residence zone is to go to three quarters of an acre lots in order to basically cluster it and to keep the, um, natural resources collected together. It's, it's a, it's a version of the thought process of a cluster subdivision. Um, I don't believe this was thoroughly vetted with subcommittee unless somebody else has a different recollection of that. Um.
I believe that didn't depend on what's that.
It really come to. Yeah, I think it was like discussed, not really come to. So they have come forward, uh, with an application. It'll be on for a public hearing for, uh, September ninth, um, which they will have the opportunity to present.
Subcommittee?
No, here. Sorry, September fifth, yes.
Thoroughly confused now between the fifth, sixth, and ninth.
We're here every day. The fifth, the fifth. You know, we talk about subcommittee at the end to remind you guys, that's on the fifteenth. Uh, but yes, for September, uh, fifth. So they'll have a public hearing in front of the planning and zoning commission. We'll have the opportunity to present.
Hey. Um, we have pending minutes from July the eighteenth of this year. Do you all have seen the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of July eighteenth as drafted.
Uh, motion to approve by Condon?
Second.
Second by Westland? Uh, we'll hold it all, am I right?
Condon, yes. Are, are they not gonna vote because they weren't there?
So they're all abstained. They still have to do something though.
But you gotta abstain.
Yeah.
He was there.
Regulino abstained?
Say both your names.
Dominic Felici abstains.
Thank you.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Westland, yes.
People abstained.
You're not, uh.
I'm not there.
You're not a seated, you're not a seated voting member. So just for clarification, it passes three zero two, the two being the two abstentions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And that's the point is.
You need to approve.
Yeah.
You can read them. You can read them.
We have, uh, no zoning.
If you watch the video.
I guess.
Watch both videos.
Oh, I have no report. Any commissioners? Have any commissioners report, Tom? Should you none?
Hmm.
Your staff report?
Uh, apologies, these are not at your desk, so I will pass these out now, but this is a, uh, summary of, I'm trying to do a little better record keeping to keep you guys in the loop, especially on follow-up, um, stuff that happens that this commission approves. So this is just to let you know some of the, um, bigger items that we have approved, um, in planning and zoning, and also a little bit of coordination with the building department. Uh, two fifteen Monroe Turnpike, O'Reilly's, we did issue a building permit. It's foundation only. Um, but they are starting construction. They met all the conditions of the approval, so they are moving forward. Uh, two fifty five Monroe Turnpike, Starbucks got their building permit. Um, that was, uh, they have been working through it for the last couple of months. I know a lot of people have been anticipating that, so their building permit has been issued out, and they will start construction as well. Twelve seventy one Monroe Turnpike, which is the twenty five, uh, unit, um, like planned unit of development. Uh, they have been coming in and slowly but surely, uh, working through each one of their individual units. So the way that we do it as staff is they have to come in and basically prove that the, the final plans, because you know, some things change a little bit once you get into the construction, that their building is still within the approved building footprint, that they're not increasing their limit of disturbance and, you know, things of that nature. So they have come in for one, two, three, four, ten, eleven legacy lanes. So, um, they now have building permits for six, uh, different units, and they contend to continue to do that construction. We have granted a certificate of occupancy for five oh five Main Street, which is Testo's. Um, so for the interior buildout, um, of the item, it is a TCO, is a temporary CO, so it's not a full certificate of occupancy. They have a couple outstanding stuff, which includes, uh, they have an outdoor dining, um, approval from me via a minor site plan, um, and a couple other things for the building department.
One question. Is why it was tagged at one time that no one could enter? Couple of weeks ago, before they received the temporary, it was that.
Maybe, maybe. Um, I think there was, I think I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I think they were hoping to be open a little earlier than that. Um, and then I think I, they had to make it clear that they, they maybe, they weren't open. Um, but, uh, we did grant, uh, staff granted a, uh, outdoor dining, uh, minor site plan approval for Testo's. The completion of that is pending. I believe they've done the majority of the work, including most of the planting, but they're still looking to get the fence up. Um, and then under other, I have two items, um, which is Z C A R A A twenty twenty three oh two, which is ten and thirty six Main Street. Um, it was the site, uh, development district number two. This commission, uh, granted the approval August third of twenty twenty three. They were required to do, uh, submit a special exception permit for the detailed construction drawings by February third, twenty twenty four. Um, this commission granted them an extension, um, in January eighteenth, twenty twenty four till August third, twenty twenty four. So that is in two days. Um, they have not submitted those plans, which means technically their S D D lapses. Um, the way the regulations are written, they only get one six month extension on top of that. Um, so, uh, you know, per those regulations, the end of the extension, if the, if it wasn't filed by August third, or if it not, doesn't get filed, it'll be null and void. The applicant has requested a second extension, um, that did not come in front of this commission because you can't physically vote to grant it to them, um, because it would be outside of the regulation. So because they made that request to this commission, I wanted to bring it to this commission, um, just to let you know, but I, I'm not letting you vote on it because then you would be outside of your own regulations. What I do have to figure out with legal is how do we, like, it was recorded? And now this is null and void. Is there anything this commission needs to do in order to basically?
Voided.
Void it, or is the fact that statutorily, you know, or is it just something I file on the land record so that if a title searcher comes, there's at least some sort of record of it? So I have to look into how to physically do that, but I was waiting until the actual deadline passed in order to, to move forward.
Does there need to be a record of it?
I mean, i- it's, it's more of like if a title searcher ever goes through and, you know, and however many years, and I'm not saying I'm leaving, but if I'm not here, like, how are they gonna know the whole backstory of it? Y- y- you know, like, there's a, there's, looks like there's a valid approval on the records, but if you dig into it, it's not. So we do try to make it easier for people to understand, like, the history of it, but I don't know if this commission needs to legally do anything. So now, in order to avoid this, just so you know, this is why when you get an S E P, that's why we're now setting the effective date for the S D D. So the last S, the last two S D Ds that you guys approved, five and six, you did not approve an effective date. So you had an adopted date, but not an effective date. When they come in for the special exception permit, you guys have then been approving the effective date of the corresponding S D D, and then everything gets filed on the land records and is valid, like, at that final time, so that this situation doesn't happen in the future where we now have something filed and we're not exactly quite sure if there's anything additional we need to do. Um, so we have dealt with this in the past, but the first couple S D Ds did have an effective date, and we want to make sure that, uh, we don't legally need to do anything more. Any other questions, owner?
Yeah, quick questions. That was a property that is half in trouble, right?
Half of the, the next one up.
Oh, it's the next one up?
Yeah, the one, the big development.
Okay.
Storage, supermarket, two restaurants.
And I think the issue is, is they don't have tenants, um, completely solidified yet, so they weren't, they didn't wanna, you know, spend the money to continue with the process when they didn't really have like a flagship, you know, store or something else to kind of build everything around.
You know what, what's going on with that, the other project, the, the one that's on the town line?
I don't know, but I.
It's a mixed use. Yeah, one mixed use we approved.
Oh, I don't know that. It was approved before my time, but I can look into that.
We're supposed to extend the sewer line and everything.
All right. Um, Thomas, uh, was here at the last meeting, so I did not make him come tonight, but just so you know, uh, there has been, uh, enforcement of the feather signs throughout town. Um, when he came and spoke to you, I think he had nineteen different properties that first round. Um, has very much been in compliant and very cooperative and working with him. So a big, big thank you to our businesses in town for being so thoughtful and cooperative. Um, since that time, an additional eight properties.
It is. Those are all new. What is happening?
So, uh, he did speak to, I believe, four of them yesterday in person, of which case they put them down right away. So again, big, big thank you to the Town of Monroe businesses. And then I think he gave the other four, uh, notification in fourteen. I think he wasn't either able to talk to the manager or the owner or things like that, um, but he did speak to them. Um, and so, uh, he has requested that hopefully in the next two weeks, they'll go down and spread the word, um, to anybody that's listening. We are enforcing, uh, feather signs. So, uh, they are prohibited per our regulations and.
If you will. Spread the word.
We are requesting for people to step down. So a big, big thank you again to our businesses because they, they truly have been like very kind and cooperative, and I know they invested money in these signs, and now we're asking them to take it down. Um, but also a big thank you to our zoning enforcement officer who has made this a priority, and, um, I, I think you can visually see it. Like, I really think, you know, it makes a difference.
A lot nicer.
Well, thank you, Kathleen. This is so wonderful. I've never been this well informed, ever.
Yeah.
The hope is, is, yeah, on the very big stuff, just to go like, yeah, keep you guys in the loop of what's going on. You drive around town, you see things are in construction, you know, people ask you guys questions about where things are at, so hopefully this arms you with a little more information that you can keep the. So hopefully this arms you with a little more information that you can keep the input. Oh, and I did also approve this afternoon, 615 Main Street, best in backyards with a minor site plan to get rid of the obnoxious lighting. They are going to replace it with lighting, but it's going to be recessed. They provided a lighting plan. They, I think it's like five foot candles at the door, which is absolutely in realm of like current standards for safety and things of that nature. And it doesn't go on to any of the neighboring property lines. The only other condition is I don't believe they actually relocated the existing light poles like they were supposed to per the special exception permit that was approved. So I made that a condition of that approval. And then my request is just that you guys don't release the bond because we are still holding on to this bond. We did request a bond release. This commission denied it because of the lighting understandably. So I just want to make sure that they comply with all of this before the bond's released because that's kind of the only thing we have to, to hold them to the fire.
I have a question. 59 and Main Street. At one time, a donut shop was supposed to go there. Are they still going there?
59 Main Street?
59 at Main Street.
59?
25.
Better town, Stanley. That little, that, that construction by right.
Road.
Oh, for East.
Came to subcommittee.
Yeah.
What's your question on it?
Where's the bagels? He wants bagel.
Is there bagels down there or no? Is there a business down there?
Um, they built the deck that's in front and the ramp outside of what they were approved for. So they got a variance for one portion of the property that they built within the setback and within the right of way, the state right of way for another part of that construction. So they are dealing with the state at the moment for one portion of it. And then they are going to, my understanding is they are going to go to the zoning board of appeals to try to get a variance for the other one. So they don't have to reconstruct the ramp and the deck. However, we don't have that application at the current moment. I also know that the building department has some violation citations, some items that they're not in compliance with the building code either. So we are waiting on them to submit an application. We did follow up with them today, so I know they're going to come in and meet with Thomas, the CEO, hopefully tomorrow. And they're just going to chalk out timeline and when we think that's going to get resolved. But the intention is a bagel shop, but they have a, they have an uphill battle to be able to keep things the way it currently is constructed.
Someday, there's going to be sidewalks built there. Is that deck going to encroach the sidewalk?
I don't know if they're going to even be able to keep that deck. So I think we got to wait to see what they come in as their proposal for remediation. And then, yeah, I have to look at what was approved because I'm not as familiar with it, but I'll make a mental note of, of the sidewalks for that area.
And they've come in front of the subcommittee.
Yeah, he wanted to put it like an apartment building.
In the back of that too, if you wanted.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the intention is a bagel shop, but part of the reason it's on hold at the moment is they built outside of the approved plans and they have several violations.
Yeah. We have a subcommittee meeting.
On the 15th.
Two weeks. I think it's, it's 6pm?
Yes, I believe we're trying to make it 6pm. This commission said they thought that would work better for them.
Is it the 15th at 6?
Yeah.
Whoever can make it.
I'll be in Tennessee on a, no way.
Even, um.
Thursday.
Yeah, we have 10 motions to adjourn.
Adjourned.
Adjourned by Condon.
Again, it'll be in Tennessee.
The second.
Dominique. Second. Dominic.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah.
Enunciate, say this. We have new staff.
Dominic, Penetia.
Second.
Yes. Got it.
All in favor? All right.